Okay, I want to call the Finance and Law Staff Committee meeting to order. It's Wednesday, August 19th, 2020. Roll call, Mr. Souza.
Yes, President.
Mr. Fiore.
Present.
And also myself, I'm present. We have three items on the agenda this evening, or this afternoon. First one is student activity requests, there aren't any. Second item is bills payable for FY '21 in the amount of $584,147.23. Do I see any questions from my colleagues?
Yeah, I just have one from Ms. Moynihan. Where's Ms. Moynihan? Ms. Moynihan, welcome. The page two. Gallivan? Check it from the bottom, $8,000. I don't remember that one. Could you just enlighten me on that, please?
Sure. Every year, we have the city building inspector inspect all of our schools. And last year, they noted that we needed to inspect all of our interior bleachers. And that is the cost for inspecting all of our bleachers over the summer. So Gallivan is the company that inspected our bleachers. So we are ready to go for our next inspection, which begins tomorrow.
And that's, and how, and all of the buildings that have bleachers, I'm assuming, and all of the facilities, I should say, that have bleachers, because it could be inside or out.
It was the internal ones, the inside ones. There's not very many that is outside. Taunton High is one of them, and that was last year.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'm all set. Move approval on the bills payable for FY 2021 in the amount of $584,147.23.
I'll second it.
Okay, your motion is being seconded. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, hearing none. Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Third item on the agenda is facilities update. I'll turn that over to Ms. Moynihan.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. As you are aware, we are getting ready to welcome staff back into our buildings. And then, of course, finishing off the, the opening of, or finishing up the construction of Mulcahy Elementary School. Currently, we are expecting staff starting tomorrow. And we are having deliveries of PPE for all of our staff that will be in tomorrow. And so, all staff that will be in tomorrow will have their PPE, so they should be ready to go. And also, we, just to let you know, in Mulcahy, we are finishing up the furniture delivery. We're doing a punch list of all the rooms. So the school is really looking like a school right now. And thank goodness for our principal, Katie Decuta, and her assistant principal, Lottie Nichols, for doing such a remarkable job, getting things ready, as I can do other things. And I know that they're doing a great job over there, so I thank them as well. And that is it.
Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, I don't believe we need a motion for that. That's it for the agenda. Anything else my colleagues have?
No.
To adjourn.
I get.
Roll call, Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
And Mr. Martin votes yes. Thank you, Steve, for adjourned.
Okay, call immediately to order. And if we could please have the roll call, Mrs. Fagan?
Yes. Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Present.
Mr. Fiore?
Present.
Mrs. Fagans, present. Mr. Martin?
Present.
Mrs. Almeda?
Present.
Mr. DeMello?
Present.
Mr. Souza?
Present.
Mayor O'Connell?
Presence.
Now for the prayer.
Thank you.
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy, and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for the opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We'll now go to public input. Mr. Souza, if you would like to read the statement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is for the August 16th, 2020, School Committee meeting pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law, Chapter 38-18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place in this public meeting of the Taunton School Committee is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this public hearing will be held remotely with no physical meeting location. These seeking to provide public input should do so using the method listed below, which I will read. Video and audio of this meeting will be aired on the local TV channel, Taunton Educational Network, which is Comcast Channel 9 and Verizon Channel 22. And a live recording of the meeting will be available on the YouTube channel, which can be accessed using the link of www.youtube.com/thstvstudio. Public input phone during the meeting is 508, and that is open now, 508-821-1221. 508-821-1221. And public input via email during the meeting is dbins, that's D-B-I-N-N-S, at tauntonschools.org. And the subject line is "The School Committee Meeting." And please provide your name and address for the record. And there's no, we did receive two emails before the meeting, and public input emails before the start of the meeting would be wdevine@tauntonschools.org. It's W-D-E-V-I-N-E@tauntonschools.org. And the subject line is "School Committee Meeting." This meeting will be recorded and posted on the Taunton Public Schools website at www.tautonschools.org. And I know we have two emails for public input, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Cabral, Mr. Barata, or Mr. Cabral, somebody has more there, right?
Correct. I believe, Mr. Barata, you have the two letters. So, Mr. Barata will be reading the letters for public input. And Mrs. Moynihan, Assistant Superintendent Moynihan, she'll be operating the phone for public input. So we've divided the tasks.
Okay, the first email is from President of the Taunton Educational Association, James Quaintance. And it's a document titled "Southeast Massachusetts Educators Action Network: A Message to Our Communities During the COVID-19 Pandemic." "The educators and staff of the Southeast Massachusetts Educators Action Network, SOME, fully understand the importance of returning to in-person learning. Many of us have school-aged children, and we have experienced the same challenges and concerns. Yet this pandemic continues to rage, leaving no communities untouched by its impact. Across the country, we are seeing more children and teens being infected. Educators continuously work for the best interests of all children within the communities in which we live and work together. The bond between schools and families is one that we must ensure, and we begin with that premise in guiding all our actions and this statement. We want nothing more than the return to school, but safety has to be paramount. We strongly support the current recommendations of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC. Six feet of social distancing must be observed at all times in the classroom and in group settings. Personal protective equipment, PPE, in all forms, as well as instruction on how to use the PPE correctly, must be supplied by the state or town to schools. PPE must be used correctly, without exception, by all those working in schools. Strict policies to prevent the spread of the virus must be in place. These include fully functioning HVAC systems, continuous intensive cleaning and disinfecting, testing and tracing, and steps to mitigate the spread immediately if the virus is detected. A protocol for what happens if the virus is diagnosed must be established. But we must question whether the risk of contracting this virus, from which hundreds of thousands of deaths have occurred, is worth taking. How and when we decide to reopen schools must be carefully considered. A phase reopening will be able to address the multitude of concerns..." ...without air conditioning, outdated dysfunctional air ventilation system, social distancing, issues related to transportation, lunches and bathroom breaks, as well as other logistical considerations associated with safe, in-person education. Returning to learning safely, in-person or remotely, requires increased funding and adequate staff. Education support professionals, ESPs, nurses, counselors, and support staff are needed to meet the essential social, emotional learning needs of students during the pandemic. All of these positions are critical to student success and well-being, whether we return in-person or remotely. Students have lost family members and have suffered the ravages of poverty induced by the pandemic. Schools will have to consider the wider breadth of issues that have affected students physically, cognitively, and emotionally. We will also need to hire additional custodial staff to ensure our schools are cleaned and sanitized per CDC guidelines. If this critical moment for our region, the state, and the world, we call on our federal and state legislatures, legislators, to ensure adequate funding exists to meet these staffing needs and CDC recommendations. Additionally, there are faculty, staff, and children who will not be able to return under circumstances safely because of underlying health issues. Reasonable accommodations must be made to ensure that we can have a return to learning that takes into account all members of our communities without relying on online platforms that have not been bargained by educators, as these do not provide essential interaction between individual students and educators. Schools are a place of community building, compassion, and collaboration. All of these facets of education enhance academic learning contribute to creating a safe and welcoming environment in which learning can take place. Social distancing, facial covers, and heightened fears do not. As experienced educational professionals, we believe that remote learning can be improved, and we are ready, when we are confident, that the safety of everyone can be secured to return in-person instruction. We, as educators working in southeastern Massachusetts communities, will continue to advocate for a return to learning that is guided by science, puts the safety and well-being of our students, staff, and faculty first, and takes into account the growing number of cases across the state and country. Signed, and there are numerous communities, Abington, All Educator Associations, Abington, Bristol Plymouth, Dyckton, Rehoboth, Education Association of Plymouth and Carver, Associate Free Town of Lakeville, Fall River, Fairfield, I'm sorry, Franklin, Halifax, Kingston, Mansfield, Middleborough, Norton, Old Rochester Professional Educators Association, Plimpton, Rockland, Secant, Silver Lake, Somerset, Westbridge Rother, and of course, our own Taunton Educators Association. That again was submitted by James Quaintance, President of the TEA.
I'm sorry, was there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, vote please, Mrs. Fagan.
Yes, Ms. Doherty?
David, did you have?
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary. They're automatically placed on file, they're on public input. It automatically goes into the record. It's perfunctory, really.
Well, if we don't need to do a roll call, I would suggest not doing it, but...
Okay. I'll, will we still leave my motion in, or?
I think, I think the motion is to be withdrawn, really. We, we, they go, they go on the record, they automatically go on the record.
All right, I'll withdraw my motion, I mean, my second.
Thank you.
So is the motion withdrawn, though?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We have a second communication from Heather Bayless Gregorius, 16 Belvoir Ave., Number One, here in Taunton. Dear School Committee Members, On page 26 of the draft plan in tonight's agenda, there is an excerpt from the July 9th guidance on Fall 2020 Special Education Services from Russell Johnston at DESI that reads the following. Quote, "For the purposes of this document, students with complex and significant needs include (students already identified as high-needs through the IEP process) and the IEP form entitled 'Primary Disability/Level of Need,' otherwise known as the PL3. Such students must meet at least two of these criteria. One, services provided outside the general education classroom. Services provider, I'm sorry, service providers are special educator, teachers, and related service providers. Special education services constitute more than 75% of the student's school day," end quote. In the reading of this passage from DESI that is included in our TPS plan for returning to school, I believe this would indicate that special education students will be classified by the district as high need if they meet two of the three listed DESI criteria. However, our district is only allowing back special ed students who meet the third criteria of 75% of their school day with special education services, even if the student meets the other two criteria of the three. Families and our Taunton CPAC have asked for further information on this. To my knowledge, to date, no one has received a response other than restating the 75% criteria. Also note that DESI has released several other criteria that can be used to classify a student as high needs, and that the PL3 form itself states professional judgment can be used in this determination. I myself have reached out to discuss my students' difficulties over the last five months, mental health concerns, DESI criteria, and requested to have professional judgment of IEP team members used in determination. I have not received any response. Please consider, as a school committee seeking out further information on this, so that our district families can understand the reasoning for exclusive use of 75% service criteria. Families deserve to be fully informed so that they can best decide if they wish to seek further action through DESI's Problem Resolution System. I ask for full transparency from my family and all Taunton Public Schools Special Education families." Thank you. Again, that's from Heather Bayless Gregorius of 16 Belvoir Ave. in Taunton.
Thank you, Mr. Barata. Whoever's, now we're going to go to public input on the phone. Ms. Moynihan, are you working the phone? All right, do we have any calls?
We have one call, and I answered their question, and it's all set. She was just wondering if the plan was going to be discussed today, so she is all set.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I appreciate you standing by. Ms., Madam Mayor, the public input has ended. We have no calls, and I'm going to turn it back to you to move on to the, with the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Souza, so we can move on to the superintendent's report, Mr. Cabral.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, in your packet, I provided you with a letter or memo that I sent out to our all-admin team, which is about 50, 51 administrators throughout the school system, where we informed them that this year, unlike past retreats under my tenure and under Superintendent Dr. Hackett, where we were able to meet in person, this year, we held what we described as virtual micro-retreats, where we had four sessions that were open to the all-admin team. And we also invited the school committee members to participate if their schedules, their work schedules allowed them to attend. So on Thursday, August 13th, we had an outstanding presentation. This presentation was very, very informing, and it's a presentation that I would like to see rolled out, that we plan to roll out to all our schools as part of our 10 days that we have for professional development under the commissioners, due to, thank you to Commissioner Riley. So the Children's Out of PCC Center, Andrea Souza, provided us with a very thoughtful presentation regarding recognizing and reporting, you know, topics that included mandated reporting laws, recognizing signs and symptoms of child abuse, myths and facts around child abuse, best practices, and how to respond and disclose child abuse, and what are the requirements for administrators and educators when it comes to reporting child abuse to their superiors. What I found to be very informative as well was the signs, and what are the signs to look for, and, and obviously, opportunities to discuss and ask questions. So we had scheduled about an hour for the presentation. We ended up meeting for about two full hours, because there were many thoughtful and thought-provoking questions that were answered by the Children's Out of PCC Center. So I provided you with the slides of the presentation that you can look at at your convenience. But again, it was a great presentation and something that we will be rolling out or sharing moving forward, as we want to make that part of our regular return-to-school training for all staff members, especially our administrators. Continuing our work with social justice, we again partnered with Nubefid Public Schools. And again, this is something that I would like to see expanded to neighboring urban districts in Fall River and Brockton. So we had about 112 administrators from Brockton, from Taunton and Nubefid, sorry, that met Thursday afternoon from 12 to 2:00. And we were, we participated in a workshop that had many breakout sessions, where we started to look at, started to investigate, and what are some of the systemic practices that exist in our school systems that we can, that we can start to address or start to identify, you know, that, that impact students of color, students who are new to our country. And again, very thought-provoking, very informative. The feedback I received from our administrators, they found it very refreshing to learn and to know that other school systems, other leaders in school systems are struggling, are struggling to come to grips with many of the challenges we have here in the Taunton Public Schools. So it's nice to know that we have brothers and sisters in other communities that we can rely on for professional development. So this will be ongoing work that we will plan to continue with Nubefid. And again, we want to incorporate more school districts in Bristol County to really make this a regional effort to address social justice in our community, in our communities. On Friday, we had a keynote speaker, Professor Kevin Gannon. He's the Director of the Center of Excellence in Teaching and Learning, and a professor at Grandview University in Des Moines, Iowa. But what was challenging about that presentation was, and I'm not sure if you've been following the news, but Iowa was ravaged by storms, and much of its infrastructure was devastated. So Professor Gannon was able to facilitate the workshop from a hotel near his home, despite the limited access to Wi-Fi. So again, it was a great presentation. He discussed his work on race and racism. He provided us with some critical topics or discussion regarding inclusive pedagogy. And he also shared with us the 19th century history as it pertains to social justice. So Dr. Gannon also shared with us an Oscar-nominated documentary titled 13th, which I can share with you if you haven't seen it yet, and also talked about his book titled Radical Hope: A Teaching Manifesto. So it was a very enlightening presentation. Again, members from the Nubefid administrative team attended, and some school committee members attended. I'm grateful for you participating and joining us in this work. And then we ended the day on Friday with a workshop from 1:00 to 3:00 with Jeff Lawrence, who provided professional development around self-care for administrators who are leading during a crisis. So his topic focused on leadership, and what exactly is leadership, and the difference between leadership and management. And there were many breakout sessions. And then he also provided many opportunities for us to meet in small groups and discuss the topics, and really challenge and push each other, and really get out of our comfort level as far as how do we manage this pandemic in trying to return our students and staff to our buildings, while also providing ourselves, while maintaining a healthy work and life balance, and home balance, while also realizing that there aren't enough hours in the day to get the work done, that we need to get done to ensure our schools are safe for students and staff. So again, it was better than I expected for two days, considering that we couldn't meet in person. The feedback I'm getting from our administrators has been outstanding and very positive. So it looks like we may be able to do things moving forward virtually, while still providing our staff with robust professional development on key topics that are vital to ensuring the successful operation of our school system. With that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral.
And I'd just say, all the backup from these presentations are in the school committee packet for you to review.
I'll screen the report.
I'm sorry, what did you say, Mr. Souza?
Oh, should we accept the report?
Second. Motion made and seconded on a roll call, vote please, Mrs. Fagan.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore? You muted, Mr.?
Yes.
Oh, Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mrs. Almeda?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next is the Taunton Public Schools reopening plan.
Mr. Jakes, do you have access to the PowerPoint? Could you share the PowerPoint, please?
I do, yep. Give me one moment.
Thank you, Steve. So as Mr. Jakes readies the PowerPoint, I'm going to follow a similar method to what we did last time. You have the 55-page white paper, or the 55-page reopening report that was sent to you in the school committee packet on Monday. The 55-page reopening report will be placed on our website, and we are going to make adjustments to our website to make it more readily accessible, easily accessible for parents, guardians, and caregivers who are following at home, or who want to review the report more in-depth at a later time. And then, once we are done with this presentation, and after we've had a successful vote on whether or not to approve or not approve the plan, we will be issuing a PSA, a Public Service Announcement, that will highlight, you know, the key topics that I'm going to be covering today. So I will not go in-depth as far as covering page 1 through 55 of our report, but I plan to do is summarize, in similar fashion, what we did during the preliminary report, which had to be submitted to DESI. Askfully answered any questions. And again, I have Nurse Manager Karen Regan available to address any of the medical concerns that committee members may have. I do have our Instructional Technology Director, Carolyn Bruno, here to talk about the LMS, the apps, and the different academic programs that will be providing our staff access to, to make sure we have a very robust education platform. And I also have members of my leadership team. And before I get into it, I do want to say, the seven task forces and the 150-plus members who participated in those task forces really put a lot of thought and effort into our reopening plan. And I believe the voice of our educators, the voice of our parents, the voice of our administrators, and the voice of our community was heard in the development of our plan. So I'm very proud of the work we've done. So I won't cover every single page of our, of this PowerPoint, because we've covered much of this already in the previous presentation. So I would ask Mr. Jakes to please move, and again, this PowerPoint will be visible on our website. I would ask Mr. Jakes to please move to slide 12. Thank you, Steve. So again, in the course of preparing our reopening plans, Taunton Public Schools engaged with the community and stakeholders in various ways. Various surveys were sent out to parents and guardians, asking them what model they were looking to have their child or children learn for the upcoming school year. It was available, and if it was available in the final plan. Individual follow-up with families was also taken, undertaken by school staff. Additionally, parent input and task force meetings was utilized to guide the final reentry plan decisions. So responses from the parent surveys I was following. So on slide 13, Mr. Jakes, I provide you with a slide or information from our survey, which was question one, return-to-school survey, and these were the results as of July 8th, 2020. So question three, at this time, we asked parents that they planned to have their child returned to school for the 2020, 2021 school year. At the time of the survey, back in July 8th, about 51% of the parents said yes. Just under 5% stated no, and about 45% were undecided, as they were awaiting more information regarding our plan. Slide 14, please, Steve. Additional surveys, questions that were asked of our parents regarding the fall, given the choice, which learning format would parents prefer? So, returning to school with safety modifications, including masks and appropriate social distancing, now 50% of the parents said they would return. Continue with distance or remote learning, 17 or 16% stated that that would be the preferred model, and about 34% stated that hybrid learning would be the preferred model. So when you combine 34 and the 16, it's about a 50/50 split. So we have about 50% of the parents who would return in-person with the safety modification and appropriate PPE, and then there was about a 50% split that would prefer remote learning or hybrid. Slide 15, please, Steve. On this slide, we provide you with information based on our survey. If schools were allowed to reopen in the fall, how strongly do you agree with the following? So again, what the questions ranged, and we asked parents if they strongly agreed, agreed, were neutral, disagreed, or strongly disagreed. And you see, under the total, we have, we had over 3,000 respondents, and we also provided you with a weighted average. So for full-time return to, to the regular school day, now 34% strongly agreed with a full-time return. For blended learning, every, every school, school every other day, it was about 8% strongly agreed, 21% agreed, 28% were neutral, and then 19% disagreed, and 24% strongly disagreed. For a blended learning model, again, I don't have to repeat, you have the data there in front of you. But you see, out of the 3,000 respondents, there was, there was a range regarding how we would return using the blended model. And for full-time distance and remote learning, again, you see that it was pretty, pretty spread out across the survey questions that were asked, or the responses that we received. Slide 16, please, Steve. So this question, we asked parents if they would, as per our preliminary reopening plan, now we intend to phase in hybrid learning model, while starting the year in full remote, except again for the identified high-needs students who will attend full in... who will attend full in-person as members of Cohort C. When hybrid learning starts, we expect that all teachers and students in pre-K through 12 will be required to wear masks for in-person learning and that students and staff will be maintaining six feet of separation. With that in mind, which model would you prefer for your child to attend the 2021 school year? So the first question, now I choose to have my child participate in hybrid model for two days in school and three days remote, received about 69% of the votes. I choose to have my child participate in full remote, just under 30%. And then my child will be participating in Cohort C is about 4%. So that's how the survey data shaped out based on the responses we received from our parents. On slide 17, regarding daycare, we did put out, and Mrs. Perry and her staff worked very diligently to identify numerous daycare providers that parents and staff could access. So would you be interested in gaining information on daycare services? So about 82% stated no, and about just under 20% stated that they would need information or would be requiring childcare services. Thank you, Steve. And then I would ask that we've already covered slide 18 and slide 19 in our previous presentations. And we also covered slide 20 in our previous presentation. So I would ask everyone to pay particular attention to slide 21, where we begin to, we begin to introduce the data or the metrics regarding COVID-19 and the average daily case rates in our town. While we do recognize that there was a testing era that significantly impacted our rating. So I believe last week around this time, the Taunton Public Schools was in the yellow or the city of Taunton was in the yellow. But after the corrective actions taken to reassess some tests that were, that came back positive, with reality, were really negative, Taunton went from an average daily case per 100,000 of 6.5 to I believe we're at 3.2 right now. So on May 12, 2020, the World Health Organization advised governments before the opening, rates of positivity in testing, again, should remain at 5% or lower for at least 14 days. In the United States, the Johns Hopkins and Medicine are tracking the positive results percentage from total tests or total number of tests given in each state based on multiple sources of data available. So in the city of Taunton, as I stated earlier, our average rate is 3.2% per 100,000. That was as of August 12. So I provided you with the, with the metrics, so with the data and the percentages and what we're using and what measures we're using to drive our decision-making when it comes to returning our students to hot, to in-person learning, whether it be hybrid or full in-person. Should, again, should the data, should the percentages justify a warrant that we can begin phasing students in for more in-person contact with our teachers in a safe and thoughtful and practical manner? So as of now, Taunton is in the green. Now, our average daily case, cases per 100,000 is less than four. And we want to continue this trend. So I want to continue to urge the public, to urge everyone, our students, our staff, every citizen in Taunton, to continue doing your part to social distance, to continue wearing masks when in public or when around others, so that we can continue this positive trend throughout the city of Taunton. Because if we all play our parts and play and do a, do our and emphasize social distancing and mask-wearing, we'll be able to return our students to school safely and hopefully in a quicker fashion that will provide them with in-person contact, which is what we all are aspiring for. Nobody on this committee, I believe, nobody in our community believes that remote learning or hybrid learning is the best form of learning. We all agree that full in-person learning is the best form of learning for all our kids. However, based on the situation that we are in now and based on the positive trend, we believe that we can get there sooner if we all continue to play our part. So again, I don't want to continue to, you know, beat a dead horse, but we, we need everyone in the city of Taunton to continue adhering to the social distancing guidelines and the recommendations so that we can open our schools and keep our community open under, under safe measures. Next slide, please, Steve. So the, the next graph is a graph that compares the states with positivity rate that are below 5%. So in Massachusetts, we are one of a handful of states that are under 5%. So right now, our rate is just over 4% per 100,000. Next slide, please, Steve. So I want to spend a little time here on slides 23. And then we'll jump around to some slides further on the presentation. So on slide 23, I want to continue to emphasize that we acknowledge and we must all realize that there is so much information being shed on this virus that is positive and that is negative. We hear many situations where some communities have pretty much no cases of COVID. And yet we see articles, we see stories across the country where people rush to open their schools, sending back thousands of students. And as soon as they can open the schools, they are closing those schools just as fast. So we want to recognize or really want to be, you know, very forward-thinking and acknowledging that there isn't a perfect plan. If there was a perfect plan, we would be implementing that perfect plan. And we continue to recognize that any reopening plan does not come without its challenges, whether it be remote, hybrid or full in-person. So our plan was developed with the following in mind. Creating a safe learning and working environment for our students and staff, number one, and will always be number one. We also realized that using the state's model, creating a comfort level for student and staff with the routines that align with the guidance provided by our local and state medical officials, TPS, the Taunton Public Schools, will be able to keep our schools open, thus maximizing the continuum of learning. So again, we don't want to see disruptions to learning because we are forced to shut down classrooms, cohorts or schools. So we believe by phasing in our hybrid approach, we will be able to sustain or keeping our schools open and sustain, you know, the flow of learning on a steady basis. We recognize that no plan can prevent COVID-19 from entering our schools, but we remain steadfast in our belief that following the strategy similar to this Massachusetts reopening plan will be able to return a greater number of learners and that will be able to reduce the probability of closing schools due to an outbreak. This will be accomplished by implementing a phased-in hybrid approach to reopening for the majority of students with our high-needs learners beginning the year in person. A phased-in hybrid will allow students and staff to safely return to our schools. The long-term health, safety and confidence of our community will center on our ability to keep our schools open. Steve, slide 24, please. So as we've learned throughout the pandemic, the virus is extremely unpredictable. So as of August 12, I've already shared with you that in Taunton, our rate is 3.2% for 100,000. And based on these percentages, we are one of 14 states to have a daily rate below 5%. This is a positive trend. So again, the, the numbers are positive, the numbers favor us. But we also need to be cautious and not get too overconfident as some school systems or some states have rushed to reopen. This is a positive trend and we will continue to monitor closely in the days and weeks ahead as we near the start of the 2020-2021 school year. More importantly, if the COVID-19 data in Massachusetts and Taunton continues to trend downward, the Taunton Public Schools will be able to phase in in-person learning at a greater rate and in a manner that is safe, with an emphasis placed on returning our youngest and newest learners back to schools sooner rather than later. Although we are currently in phase three of Massachusetts reopening plan, we must, as a community, continue to be focused and adhere that the health and safety measures successfully implemented throughout our community if we wish to contain COVID-19. Our daily risk average, based on, based on virus status indicators locally and regionally, coupled with frequently updated state and national spread metric data, will drive our decision-making during each stage of the phased reopening. Slide 25, please, Steve. I want to continue to emphasize and continue to beat this drum that this cannot be done in isolation. All stakeholders, all students, all staff must buy in to the new culture of safety and precaution actions on a daily basis to minimize the risk to the fullest extent possible. We cannot just implement one strategy to combat COVID-19. We must adhere to all the preventative and precautionary strategies detailed throughout our plan. By doing so, the Taunton Public Schools will be best positioned to significantly reduce the risk of transmission. In addition, although we are currently in phase three of the reopening plan, we must, as a community, continue to be focused and adhere to the health and safety measures successfully implemented throughout our community if we wish to contain COVID-19. And lastly, our daily risk average, based on the virus status indicators locally and regionally, coupled with frequently updated data and the national spread metric, will drive our decision-making during each stage of our phased reopening plan. So slide 27, please, Steve. So phase one of our phased-in reopening. So phase one will primarily focus on the 10 days Commissioner O'Reilly has authorized or provided districts for professional development. So beginning August 27 through September 11, all educators will be provided with professional learning opportunities to review, learn, understand and be able to implement the health and safety protocols, which will be utilized while in-person instruction is taking place. Additional professional development opportunities will also include the use of technology applications, content-specific supports, trauma-sensitive and culturally-responsive instruction. As is our practice, we will also be providing our mandated annual training on the civil rights, code of ethics, bullying and acceptable use policy. So I just want to spend a little time on this slide. So what the district is committed to doing is building a very robust educational learning system. So we will have Google Meet as our learning management platform. We will have apps that are listed in our plan that will provide our teachers with the ability to teach remotely, whether it's remote, in hybrid or full remote. We are committed to providing additional educational resources. So we will be providing our students in K, our teachers and students and families in grades K through five, they will have access to an online library of curriculum and videos that our teachers will use and embed in their planning. We will, through the Florida Virtual School. We will also have for grades six through 12, we will have Edgenuity, which will provide, again, a library of academic resources for our students and staff and parents. What is nice about these platforms and something that we will explore with the Florida Virtual School, Edgenuity provides on-demand PD for our teachers to learn how to properly use Edgenuity and incorporate it into their lesson planning. And Edgenuity also provides our parents and students with online tutorials where a real person will actually walk a child through on a whiteboard on their Chromebook on how to address any problem that they are having. So unlike, so from the lessons learned when we closed school and had to go remote starting March 16 to the end of the school year, we are making this platform more engaging and really trying to replicate what would normally take place in the school day for our students, staff and families. So it will not be what, where lessons are loaded on Monday and then students are asked to work on those lessons. Is there's going to be actual engagement with our students on a daily basis on Mondays and Tuesdays, Thursdays and Fridays. And under our plan, Wednesday will be full remote day. And again, as, when I finish the presentation, Mrs. Bruno is here to answer any questions you may have regarding our learned and new management system. And Mr. Barado and I can tackle any questions regarding the educational resources. I'd be remiss if I didn't include that we will also be adding online resources through Wonders, which will be a K, pre-K through five educational system or platform that our students will access, our staff will be able to access and provides reading instructions to our students. Page 28, please, Steve. So part two of our preparation, or part two of our preparation to period for hybrid learning. So beginning on September 14. And again, currently, we're right now between, we're more toward the green, but if we remain between the green and the yellow, now if the average daily cases per 100,000 remains between four and eight in the city of Taunton for more than 14 days, the Taunton Public Schools will continue the hybrid remote learning with an emphasis placed on phasing in high-needs learners who make up Cohort C to in-person learning. And the rest of the information on this slide I covered during our previous presentation. As part of phase three, please, Mr. Jakes, on slide 29. So phase three, again, will be driven by the data and will be driven by how the virus is trending. So if we are in green or fewer than four or less than five for 100,000, if the average daily cases per 100,000 is less than four, we're in the green and the white in the city of Taunton for more than 14 days, the Taunton Public Schools will phase in hybrid learning with a continued emphasis on our high-needs learners, Cohort C, and continuing full in-person. And we will focus our return on new learners, students who are new to the Taunton Public Schools, which will be our kindergarten students, will be our rising pre-K students, and then our first graders, who will be our rising kindergarten students in first grade. And then we will also look to phase in our fifth grade, which will be our rising elementary school students to middle school and our eighth graders, who will be our rising middle school to high school students. So we would begin front-loading our schools, starting with elementary, middle or high school in a very thoughtful and practical way, in a manner that is safe. So students will be broken alphabetically. So right now, our principals are finalizing the list. I do want to state publicly that we have started with dividing the classes or dividing into cohorts with last names A through M for Monday and Tuesday. And Thursday and Friday cohorts would be N through Z. So as we're doing this work, we are noticing that a better balance is to have our groups broken down A through, A through L or A through K and A through K, excuse me. And then to have the Tuesday, the Thursday, Friday cohort broken down L through Z. So that is information that will be distributed to families soon. I know Mr. Byron, one of our middle school principals, has taken the lead in working with our principals and they are drafting the communication that we'll be sending out in the very near future to our families once the letter has been finalized. And the rest of the information I, I presented, I covered during our previous presentation. So slide 30, please, Steve. So for the phase in hybrid instruction, so if we are in the unshaded section, so if the average daily cases per 100,000 is fewer than five total cases over a 14-day period and it remains unshaded in the city of Taunton, Taunton Public Schools will begin full in-person learning. Again, if the data, metrics, the virus is trending in a positive direction, now we will implement or try to phase in more learning. But again, we realize that we have to have some opportunities to phase this in and we have to set some, some timeframes or some parameters in order to do this. So if we realize on a Friday that we're in the unshaded area where we can't realistically shift to in-person learning on a Monday, there'll have to be some timeframe where we can transition and prepare and communicate to families what we'll be doing and how we'll be doing it. So again, the city of Taunton, the Taunton Public Schools will begin full in-person learning with all elementary school students, middle school learners and high school learners in cohorts A and B attending school in person full-time should transmission levels remain low. The district will provide full in-person instruction, implementing all health and safety protocols. Again, social distancing requirements, face coverings as directed by the elementary and secondary, Department of Secondary Education in conjunction with all federal, state and local health agencies. I do want to put this disclaimer there. You know, we want to continue to stress if the deal, if the average daily cases per 100,000 is above eight and we are in the red in the city of Taunton, then the Taunton Public Schools will move back to remote learning for all students. The Taunton Public Schools reserves the right to move along the continuum of all phases as needed and dictated by the health and safety metrics, data and information that we have provided. So again, I want to have that disclaimer widely, widely known that we intend to move along this continuum based on the metrics, based on the data and how this virus is trending in our community. And then slide 31, I already covered in our previous presentation. So this is a holdover from the previous presentation. I would ask Mr. Jakes to please go to slide 34, where we talk about our English language learners, which is considered part of our high-needs or high-priority group to return to school. So I'll just cover this quickly. So our EL students who attend Taunton Public Schools Newcomers Academy have been identified as high, as high-needs population. So on a case-by-case basis, students who attended the Newcomers Academy last school year may also be identified as within the high-needs population. So this population is considered high need due to the fact that they have entered the United States within eight, within the year. They need support to develop their English and they also need, they're also need navigate, help navigating the country that they are living in. Family and school connections are a priority in order to provide high-level instruction and support for the entire family. So in order to provide the above, the high-needs students will be attending schools on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays and Fridays. And again, as part of our plan, Wednesday will be remote for all learners, including our newcomers. And again, on Wednesdays, when they practice remote learning, they'll be, will be, will be providing technical support to students. We'll bridge face-to-face learning with remote learning using technology. We will conference with families. We will connect with families and community facilitators. I should also share at this time that we are in conversation with Bridgewater State University, thanks to Senator Pacheco and President Fred Clark, to see if there's a partnership, an opportunity to partner with Bridgewater State to provide some remote support to all our learners, to also provide some social work support to all our learners, and also to provide robust PD to our staff on how to teach synchronously and asynchronously using some of the models and some of the platforms that Bridgewater State had utilized successfully. We've also reached out to Bridgewater State for additional student teachers who may be interested in working in our school system, supporting our teachers. We also are reaching out to Bridgewater State University to all their juniors and seniors who are learning remotely to see if they would be interested in subbing in our schools or during the day and then completing their coursework in the evening. So I'm very excited about this opportunity to really support our parents, students, and also our staff and support our school system. So I will keep the school committee up to date on those meetings moving forward. Slide thirty-five, please. So with technology, I just want to spend a little time on, in the middle of this graph regarding the timeline, because I know there's been a lot of questions. I did issue a public service announcement regarding where we are with Chromebooks distributions. Like many states and many school systems, we have some Chromebooks that are in back order so that we are waiting for those to arrive. So in July and August, the Technology Department, you know, they assigned every student a device, and they have a database that is managing all this information. In mid-August, the Technology Department will have all the rosters of students, teachers, and staff in the major, in major software applications within ClassLink. Additionally, Google Classroom courses will be created. School Brains will automatically enroll teachers and students into Google Classroom courses. So right now, our principals are working very hard to get all our students entered into School Brains so that our, so that Carolyn Bleno can push the button that will sync all our apps and all our platforms with School Brains with our students, creating our class lists. In mid-August, Chromebooks will be distributed. So we already distributed Chromebooks to our high school students. And as we await the final shipments of our additional Chromebooks that we need and when they're serviced and imaged, we'll be, we'll continue distributing Chromebooks to students in middle school and elementary school. I do want to state, unlike the remote portion of our plan back in, back in March through June, every student enrolled in the Totten Public Schools will receive a Chromebook. So if there are multiple students living in a home, so for example, if we have a home with four or five kids, every child in that home will receive a Totten-issued Chromebook. But we will not have the need for Chromebooks to be shared within a family. Every child will receive one if they are enrolled in the Totten Public Schools. And if a family requires a hotspot so that they have internet access, they will receive hotspots so that they have access to the internet. So again, we are making that available to all our families through our CARES funding and through additional grants that we have received from the, from the state and the federal government. Some of the applications that Mrs. Bleno has, is utilizing to build our learning management system. Again, it'll be Google Meet is what we will be using. We will have ClassLink. We'll be utilizing Flipgrid. We'll be utilizing Peer Deck, Google Suite, Formative. GoGuardian is a great application that will monitor student usage but will also notify us if someone is at risk or if someone is placing someone else in harm's way. And also will allow staff to monitor students when they are in breakout rooms using the Google Meet. We'll be utilizing EdPuzzle. We'll be utilizing Loom. And what we are going to use is our two-way communication tool will be the app Remind that all staff and parents will have access to. We've already covered transportation on slides thirty-six and thirty-seven in our previous presentation. We are waiting for the guidance on slide thirty-eight regarding extracurricular activities and sports. I believe some new information which issued last night, or some new information was issued early today that we will be, we're viewing in the near future. On slide thirty-nine, we are committed to continue feeding our students. So right now, we are working with our legislatures to urge the federal government to allow us to extend our summer meal feedings to our students into the ten days that the commissioner has identified as professional development. So we want to make sure that we continue to feed all our students either at our schools as meal sites and also into the community as we did throughout the summer where we distributed over a hundred thousand meals to our kids. So that pretty much covers the changes that were made to the plan that were different from the first time we met. If there are any questions or concerns that need to be addressed, I will do my best to answer them. If I cannot answer them, I will ask those from the leadership team, Mrs. Bleno, regarding anything that involves technology and Karen Regan, our nurse manager, to cover anything that we, that involves, you know, the COVID virus and health and safety precautions that we have. But again, I do want to state that we do need a formal vote to accept this report as our reopening plan by the school committee.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. I, I know a lot of people have put a lot of time, hours, thought, effort into putting all of this information together and this plan together. And we really appreciate the work that's been done. I, I just have a couple of clarification questions. So in the plan, we have Phase Three, which is the hybrid instruction. And it states that the daily cases need to be less than four per one hundred thousand. So that's where we are now. We were at the three point two, as you stated, on August twelfth was the last time they updated that. And our cases have steadily gone down for an extended period of time. Now, today, we're at eighty-three positive cases in our whole entire city, which is just really fantastic. So the DESI guidelines, or I guess they're expected school learning models, state that they recommend full-time in-person learning for a, a green community unless there's some kind of extenuating circumstances. And we're in that green right now. So I guess my question is, when and how is the process going to be that we go, we start going into hybrid? Because according to DESI and according to our numbers, we could actually start in-person if, if we so chose. And we could, or we could start hybrid, but right now, the plan is to start fully remote except for the high-needs learners.
Yeah, so I, I think our plan and I, and I, I again, I want to reiterate, I think the data is trending in a positive direction for us that may allow us to move faster, but to move quicker. But I also feel we need to be very cautious. Despite the fact that we're in the green and trending towards the white, I think our, our plan to move with the hybrid and phasing, and phasing in the high-needs learners makes sense as we are trying to get everyone comfortable, everyone acclimated to this new normal. And also part of our remote plan, by opening a remote, I believe that'll better position us in the event we do have to turn or go for remote. So by phasing in the high-needs learners, opening a remote, and with the positive data trending or the data, the virus trending in a positive direction, I think we can get to what you're, what you're, what you're stating, Mayor, which is to full in-person learning. But I don't agree that if we were to rush for full in-person learning, I think we would be closing our schools just as fast as we are opening. I think we really need to proceed with caution and make sure that the phase-in model works and is effective so that we can return learners back effectively versus opening our schools and then having to go full shutdown. So I think our plan makes sense and will get us to where we need to get and also provide confidence in the community and the public that we're doing what is in the best interest of their students as well as our staff.
Okay, yeah, and, and I understand that fully. And so I, I guess my question is, is we're already in that, the number that we want to be to do the phase-in hybrid, how you're going to be looking at that? The new numbers for the two-week classification are coming out again today. So I imagine that your, your staff and your team are going to be looking at those again. And we have three weeks before school starts. So I, I really just want to be focused on what is our plan to continue to monitor? And we're already at that phase. I understand that people still on your team, you know, want to start fully remote because that's your plan and you feel like that's a safe plan. And we all want our kids to be safe. But we are where we need to be. And so like you said, we can certainly look at accelerating. How we phase it in is still in a phased-in approach.
Yeah, and I, and I agree. I think the two-week window, the two-week data where we went from, you know, identifying that there was a testing error that was in our favor and got the data down to where we needed to be. If we continue to trend that way, then yeah, that'll, that'll be some signals or that'll be some indicators that we may be able to bring some more of our special needs students in sooner or begin phasing in some of our new learners in sooner. But again, I think a lot of it is going to rely on the metrics. And also, we want to make sure that parents have ample time to prepare and adjust should there be any changes. But I think the plan that we are putting forward makes sense and incorporates the hybrid and also incorporates the remote. So I guess what we're doing is a little bit of both in trying to be very thoughtful and practical in how we build this out. I also think, going back to what we said earlier, there is no perfect plan. And there is no ideal plan. So I realize, and I think everybody on this Zoom realizes that if we were to open up in full remote, there'd be a segment of our population would be upset. If we were to open up in full in-person, there would be a segment of our population that would be very upset. I think what we're trying to do here is do something or roll out a plan that will be what's in the best interest of all our families, our staff, and our community.
Right, and, and as you stated, it looks like we may be able to accelerate that based on our excellent numbers that we have. The, the other question I had was, I'm, I'm just a little confused on the criteria for in-person, fully in-person learning for Phase Four. So it says, average daily cases per one hundred thousand is fewer than five total cases. That sentence is a little confusing. Are you saying fewer than five total cases for the whole entire city over fourteen days?
So if we are in the shaded area and the metrics or the data puts us in that area, we can return everybody safely, and that's when we would open up to bring everybody safely when we're in the white area, the unshaded area.
Because on, on what the, the DESI, what they issued in their document, it says fewer than five total cases over fourteen days, which to me says in the whole entire community. Not our one hundred thousand.
We need to clarify that language. We will, so that it's more, so that it's clearer. But again, DESI is providing the guidance, and these are some, this is information that we can use to develop our plan. And the decision, again, is with the school board to whether or not we accept this plan as is. Well, if we want to make changes or alter changes, that's something that we can do. But I believe the plan that we are putting forward makes the most sense for our community and most sense for our schools. So I don't disagree that we want to get to full in-person learning, but we want to make sure that the metric, the unshaded, it allows us to bring all our students back safely. And if it's fourteen days, less than, less than five, that's what we'll use. But again, DESI is providing guidance. DESI is not dictating that this is what we're going to do. It's a local decision that this school board will vote on when we conclude this discussion.
Correct, and I just, it, it seems to say the average daily cases per one hundred thousand is less than five. And that's actually less quite restrictive than the one hundred thousand cases with less than four. So I just, I think the language might be incorrect on that. And the unshaded area, it, it does say on the guidance that it's for small population, small population communities with very few cases. So I just want to put that out there so people are really aware of what it says and what's realistic for us to do. Working, you know, collaboratively to get our kids back to school in a safe manner, which I know is everyone's utmost priority.
Yeah, I, I do wish in this case that we were a rural school system where we had maybe one elementary school, one middle school, and we were part of a regional high school, because it would be much easier to open up full in-person or go full hybrid. But unfortunately, we are a large community, over eight thousand students. I think that puts us near the top as far as urban schools that are really struggling with, you know, a manner to keep our schools open safely and to return our kids back safely. So I don't believe, and now the members of the committee can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't believe bringing thousands of students back into our schools will allow us to keep our schools open in a, in a sustainable manner moving forward. I think if we were to bring thousands of kids back right away, we would be, we, we would disrupt the continuity of learning. We would lose public confidence. And I also am worried about the confidence of our staff to provide them with a safe teaching environment.
Okay, I just think we want to think about the Phase Four criteria because fewer than five cases over fourteen days. I'm just not sure if that's a realistic number for our community because as you're saying, we have such a large community and that's really geared toward the very small community. So it's just something I think the committee might, might want to think about on that criteria for full in-time learning because that could be hard for us to accomplish. So, so thank you very much for your indulgence. Thank you, everyone. And the only, the last question I had was, do, do you have a number of the students that will be coming back in Cohort C yet? The high-needs students?
I don't have the number at my fingertips, but that's information that we can provide. Mrs. Maruni, are you, do you have, do you have that number?
So currently, we have a hundred and forty-nine families that have committed to their children coming back.
Thank you, Judy.
Have more students though than a hundred and forty-nine?
It's a hundred and forty-nine students are coming back.
He said families, so I didn't know if that.
Yep, the families made the commitment for their children to come back, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate your patience. And I know David Sousa has been waiting very patiently.
Do I have the floor?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, I think that I have a couple of things. I'm gonna have to ask Mrs. Bleno a couple of questions, only because technology is my thing. So if I don't go to technology, I, I feel lost. I just have one comment, and I think this, this, this plan, the key part of this plan is sustainability. Go back in a slow, methodical method over a series of weeks to make sure we can sustain being in the buildings and our staff and students. And I, and I think, I think it does that. And I know Mr. Cabral's working with the Board of Health and Nurse Regan, that she's in direct communication with them many times. And I feel that this plan is, is well thought out for this community. And, and that's it. Ms. Bleno, I do have a couple of questions for you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Unlike what happened in the spring, this is totally different. And I, and I want to let people know that this is totally different. This is, this will be high-end remote learning. Will students have access to the software after classroom? In other words, if they want to do enrichment on their own and not only do their homework or schoolwork, but do enrichment on their own, will they have access to that? How is that going?
Absolutely. So in addition to the resources that we have provided to enhance Google Classroom and in addition to the additional virtual software that has been procured, there are a substantial number of applications that reside on the students' ClassLink webpage that give them access to continuous learning, including virtual novels that they can go ahead and, and look at or, or also hear via audiobook.
Excellent, thank you. And one of the only questions I get all the time, and I don't want to put you on the spot because you may not have it right now, but can you give us a ballpark on when middle school, elementary are going to get their Chromebooks? Because that's all I hear about.
Sure. So we are in the process of enrolling those right now. So my team, my very small team, but effective team, is in the process of unboxing fifteen hundred Chromebooks that was just received this morning. So they are busy working, and so we anticipate that we will have, we will definitely have those good to go prior to the start of school. But we anticipate not rolling those out until the very start of September. We, you have an issue. You have a shipment of Chromebook cases that are arriving next week. We want to make sure we pass out the Chromebooks in the same nice case that we passed out the Chromebooks to the high school. That way, it will protect the Chromebook and keep it all secure for students to go back and forth once they go hybrid.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that comment only for the fact that people have to recognize that school isn't going to start. Yeah, I, I appreciate that comment only for the fact that people have to recognize that school isn't going to start hopefully on the 14th of September. So we still have time. If you have your Chromebook now, you're not going to get it next week. You'll still have time to get it. And technology is working at their, doing their due diligence to get them. That's it for now. Uh, thank you, Ms. Blino, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sousa. So we'll go to Mr. DeMello next, then Mrs. Almeida, and then Mr. Palowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Through you, uh, to Mr. Cabral. I was going to reserve this comment towards the end of the new business, but since Mr. Cabral brought it up during the reopening plan regarding Senator Pacheco's supplemental appropriation bill, uh, the dollar amount was not mentioned. I think that's important to mention. That's $125,000 that will assist in, uh, resources for distant learning and technology and serving the students that are underserved. And I continue to say that this is not a school committee issue. This is a community issue. Public and private partnerships are detrimental to our success. I know we have a lot of private institutions out there that continue to help us, whether it's a banking institution or a company in the industrial park. And of course, our legislators on Beacon Hill, which we have one on our committee, that $125,000 is certainly a lot of money and it's in the right direction. And I'm very positive that we're going to get through this and that these public and private partnerships are going to be the key to our success. So, Mr. Cabral, thank you. And I, I know that Bridgewater is instrumental in this too and going forward. And, uh, thank you for all the work you're doing on that part and to all of our committee and everybody involved. That's my comment for now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Mrs. Almeida?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I think it's an excellent report. I want to thank everyone who worked so hard on it. I think, um, it took a lot of time and effort for a whole bunch of people that did a whole bunch of work and put long hours into what they did. And I know that we need to vote on this. I want to make a motion that we accept this plan and submit it to DESI.
Seconded.
Seconded on just continued discussion. Mr. Palowski.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, um, I actually have quite a lot of questions. So, um, I'll, I'll try to keep to just two for right now. Let everybody speak. And if there's time, I'll, I'll ask some further ones. So, um, my first question, um, actually, um, I'd like to direct to Karen Reagan, if I may. So, so definitely, we're going to have to do some editing regarding the COVID data because I think there's some confusing num- numbers in there and things that aren't quite right. So we'll probably want some clarification. But Karen, if you could perhaps speak on, um, the decisions been made that we're going to use the average daily cases, average daily new cases of COVID-19 per 100,000 in the city of Taunton. If you could perhaps explain why that particular data was chosen as being relevant to how safely we can open our schools as opposed to other bits of data. So for instance, another bit of data is percent positivity, meaning every single test and how many of them came out positive.
What they're looking at that data is how many individuals per day over a two-week period are testing positive. So those are the individuals that could potentially spread COVID-19 to other individuals. So we're looking at trends. Not only do we look at that, though, we also look at the number of hospitalizations. Right now, we have three individuals at Morton Hospital, the latest data. We also want to look at ICU, because that will tell us how many individuals have serious illness with COVID. And right now, we have no hospitalizations in our Morton Hospital in the ICU. So we also want to look at, again, we want to look at trends. How are we doing here in Taunton and also in Massachusetts? So that number there will tell us how many, and they had to use a common denominator and they picked 100,000 in Taunton. So we will watch this. I'm keep looking over here at my other screen because our new data should be coming out any minute of what the last two weeks were. It's usually by four, but it's not up yet. So we will, along with the Board of Health, look at how is our community doing? And I do agree with this reopening plan because I believe when we bring in a small number of children into our school system, we have 10 days to do training for our staff. We want to make sure our staff are comfortable with using PPE. Our nurses are fine. We do universal precautions all the time. We want to make sure they're comfortable with it. So with a small number of students, we can work with the new PPE, look at the tasks they're doing and what's required of it. We have purchased at least six months of PPE. Everything that the state has recommended from goggles, face shields, masks, KN95s, surgical gowns, gloves and so forth. We have that now in our warehouse. And we will be distributing it to the nurse's office and our staff on the first few days of school before our children come in. So I do agree again with the plan and the numbers we're looking at, not only the number per day over 14 days, but again, the hospitalizations, ICU, and the severity of symptoms. It appears that individuals that are getting this illness in Taunton don't have as many symptoms and are as seriously ill because of the hospitalizations and ICU numbers. Does that help?
Absolutely. Thank you, Karen, very much. I think that was very helpful and that was a very comprehensive explanation of this. So thank you very much for that. And Madam Mayor, if I may, through you, um, my second question, and I guess this is probably more to, um, Mr. Cabral and perhaps Mrs. Mulrooney. So I mean, I know in our district right now, we have 1,200-plus students that are special education students. Um, and Cohort C is not going to be able to service all of them. So would, have we already or will we soon make sure that we've given all of these families clarification of why or why not their student has qualified for Cohort C?
I'll ask Mrs. Mulrooney to discuss the process that she is utilizing or her and her team are utilizing with contacting families and then future communications that will be going out to families.
So what we did is we looked at the PL3 page and the students placement page. We came up with a group of approximately 269 students that fit into the category of high need. At that point, my staff called each family to find out if they were interested in their, their child participating in person or would they be remote. We called each family twice. We then followed up with an email. And then we sent the list to the principals so they could reach out. So we still have a number of families we haven't heard from. But the number that I gave, the 149, is the definitive number of students right now that have said they will be attending in person.
And then following up with the remaining students, if they have any questions or concerns or parents are still uncertain regarding get their child fits or meets the criteria for Cohort C. And we'll be working on communication that we can get out to families. And we're also, in our plan, and we also are going to list all the numbers, phone numbers and emails for all our principals. So that, and we're also going to fix that on our website so that parents know who the principal is on the email chain on this new webpage so that parents can contact their schools if they're still uncertain. So any school committee members are contacted by families, please continue to remind them to contact the child's principal. And if they're not successful, they can reach out to Mrs. Mulrooney and her team and also Mrs. Perry in the Student Services Department. So, and we will have a PSA, again, as I stated earlier, going out. We will explain this information to families if they need to contact their school and acquire this information. So we do want to continue with the communication, utilizing School Brains, PSAs and our social media platforms.
Okay, thank you very much. And, and Madam Mayor, if you could just indulge me once, I'll, I'll just make my comment on the plan. Um, so I, I, I agree with, with the plan as it's laid out. Um, I think the number one priority is keeping our, our students and our staff safe. So I appreciate the fact that we are using a data-driven approach. Um, I like the idea of starting remotely so that we can make sure that we get everything aligned and planned properly. And I agree with the phased-in plan of beginning hybrid learning. But I think I speak, I speak for myself as a parent, and I think I speak for a lot of parents and students. We want to see our kids in school with some level of in-class, in-person learning as soon as we can. So, um, I think we definitely want to take advantage of the fact that we do have favorable COVID-19 numbers. We have proper PPE plans in place. We've got good weather in September and, and October. We could utilize outdoor spaces. So I definitely want to make sure that we're getting, um, periodic updates on where we are towards being able to get, um, our students into hybrid learning. Because I think the sooner we can get more kids in there, the better. Of course, always doing it in a controlled fashion and paying attention to the, to the data. So thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Palowski. Mr. Martin?
I agree with the plan and I appreciate all the hard work that the administrators and staff have put into this plan. I agree with my colleague, Mr. Palowski. We certainly want kids back in the classroom. There's no question. But as he stated, we want them to be safe and the, and the staff. Uh, one of the things I like about going remote initially is, uh, even though our numbers are down, because if, by going remote initially, we experience remote. And hopefully, we can move sooner than later into some sort of a hybrid. But if the numbers go the other way, going back to remote will not be new because the students will already have experienced it. So by starting out remote, getting our feet on the ground, looking at the numbers, moving as, as numbers dictate into a hybrid situation and hopefully moving forward from that. If in fact, things go the other way, it will not be that much of a change for students and staff to go back to remote. So that's one of the things I like about the plan as far as signing out remotely. Uh, uh, obviously with Cohort C needing that in-person attention. So I do support the plan. And again, I just want to reiterate, I do appreciate all of the work that everyone has put into this. It's a, I mean, I, I, I was in the central office as an assistant superintendent for 13 years. And some is, are busy under normal conditions. This has been crazy, uh, for the staff to have to not only try to get school open, but under the circumstances, it's just crazy. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Good point, Mr. Martin. Thank you. Hey, are we all set? Oh, Mrs. Fagan and then Mrs. Storey.
Yeah, I, having worked on two different aspects of, of this whole thing, there'd be some days it was dizzying, all the things that we had to consider and talk about. But I, I really do applaud the way this all fell into place. And as far as what you said, Mr. Martin, I was going to say the same thing, that it's good to get this going this way because it'll be a lot easier to do it now than it was the last time, which was a complete unbelievable horror show for everybody because nobody really knew how to do this. And I, I, you know, I hear people say this will be the wave of the future. I hope not. I really think human beings have to be human beings and be with one another and interact. But I do have one question, and, and so I applaud everybody and I know how hard they work. But for Karen Reagan, could you explain to me, I understand there were several tests in Taunton that were false positive. What was like over 150 or something like that?
28.
What, what, the 28?
We had on August 12th, they had said we had 52, um, positive cases and it went down to 28. They went down to 26. So I think that's 28, right? My numbers are correct?
Okay.
Yeah, it was 28.
That kind of messed up some people that were told they had been with somebody because I, I knew a bunch of kids that happened to and the person never had it. So I, those kinds of things happen. Is there any way that they identify which tests have been, have been problematic? Or is it, because you said something about, I, I think you said the serology of some of them, was it correct?
Um, that was a PCR too. I'm sorry, what was that?
You, when I had spoken to you a couple of weeks ago, you said something about the serology was off on some of those things. So I'm just curious, when things like this happen, how do they identify? Or is there any way to identify the actual whoever made the test that came back wrong?
I guess they do look at all our testing labs because we have several labs that we send the, um, tests to. And one of them had a significantly higher test positive within a three-day period. So they are doing, um, they watch these labs every day. And when they see these high upticks, they see why are we having so many positives from one area in one day? And when they looked at that, they found out and they retested it, that 28 of the 52 came back negative. A serology test is something different. That's a blood test. That tells you if you've been exposed to it when. This is more of telling you if you're infectious with it. It's the nose test. They do watch our labs to make sure that the, um, that the results are accurate. It happened in two communities, but they did pick it up quite quickly.
But I, I, I've had kids take it and they were, they, they thought they were sick and they never had it either. So I'm just, I'm just questioning how valid some of them are. And I'm wondering if that, this is the type of stuff that skews everything off and kind of adds to everybody becoming increasingly, uh, trepidatious about what's going on, you know? So I'm not sure if anybody can get a good read on it. But I, I've watched a lot of stuff and I've read a lot of news, newspaper articles and everything. And I, I really think the right thing to do was to go in slowly. But I don't think there's any of us that don't want to see these kids back in school. I think that they miss it. You talk to them how much they've missed, how, some are very nervous about what they missed as far as classroom experience, not only the social interactions. And I, I spoke to Mr. Cabral about it this morning, about just kind of trying to figure out or ascertain where these kids actually are after this long period of not having school. So I hope that's something else we can move on to, Mr. Cabral. But thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. And Mrs. Storey?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and I thank my colleagues for the very thoughtful comments. And so I support all of those comments and will try not to repeat them. I think that, um, our, uh, school leadership, uh, all the folks who have participated in the development of this plan made some very profound decisions, uh, in regard to laying this out in a way that supports first, the health and safety and well-being of both our staff and our students. We are a very diverse community and across the spectrum of families and our students, there are so many different kinds of needs that have been expressed to us in various messages and emails that have been shared with the public and on our parent survey. And I think that, uh, certainly, uh, as Mrs. Fagan has said, we want our children to get back as quickly as possible. We also want the, the very positive experiences that we have in the community around the, the downward trajectory of the virus is really important for us to maintain. And so taking a very conservative and slow approach into reentry is really important to keep that, uh, rate of, uh, positive cases down. Uh, we don't want to be responsible for having those numbers increase. And so our governor has proceeded with caution in terms of the, uh, phase in reopening of the, uh, economy, of the Commonwealth. And so we follow suit, proceeding with caution, uh, in regard to our reopening of our schools, of starting remotely. If we get very positive, uh, results, we'll go very quickly into, uh, our hybrid mode for, and then follow suit with, uh, reentry completely. Just, I, I, I ask the public to be very patient in, in that regard. And obviously, to continue to provide us with feedback, uh, in terms of the experiences of their children. And I think that all of that is built in. I just have a, a, well, I have many questions, but nonetheless, I'm, so one of the things that we know about the virus is the caution to have good ventilation in our school buildings. And so through you, Madam Mayor, to our superintendent, I just want to, there's a lot of conversation that goes on about our HVAC system and looking at our HVAC system, making sure that our windows open so that there's good cross-ventilation. If you would just address that to assure folks who are looking at that, that that kind of activity is going on and that the ventilation will be, uh, positive, I guess, and lend itself to keeping the virus low.
Yes, I want to start off by saying this is not a criticism of the Building Department. The Building Department, the HVAC guys, Dave Silver and Michael Pappas, they do a great job maintaining the HVAC, uh, units throughout offices in the filters regularly. And, uh, most recently, they provided Assistant Superintendent Moynihan with a chart or a graph that shows when they change the filters on a basis. However, I mean, I do feel as a superintendent, it's important for us to communicate to our teachers and also to communicate publicly that we are investigating the status of our HVAC units throughout the district. So, uh, we will be working with a third-party vendor, you know, someone who has no skin in the game with Taunton. They're going to assess our HVAC units. Uh, I've asked them to focus on our older buildings, Galligan, Letty, Martin and Bennett first. And then we will look at the rest of our schools. And we want to make sure that our HVAC units are working, uh, at, at their maximum capacity. Uh, we've had some information that has been shared with those that we are going to ask this third-party vendor to look into to make sure that the units are working at the level that they need to be working. And if there's any virtual fitting or any adjustments that need to be done, we will ask our Building Department Maintenance Crew to perform the task. And if we need to hire, And if we need to hire an outside vendor to perform that work, we will hire an outside vendor to perform that work using our cares and other grant funding that the state and federal government have provided to address such concerns. So we want to make sure that the public and our staff feel confident that we are making or doing everything within our means to provide everyone with a safe learning environment because we know HVAC is a very important topic publicly throughout our community.
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are we ready to vote? There's been a motion. Oh, Mr. Fiori, please, and then Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I certainly want to offer my support to the plan, and I also want to echo Representative Doherty's comments about sustainability. I would hope that in implementing the plan, once we see that we're getting the statistic that we want, I would hope that we would wait another week or two beyond that to be sure that we're sustaining. I'm saying that based on some of what we're seeing in some of the other places that have started too soon. Looked most recently at the situations at Notre Dame and the University of North Carolina, Chapel Hill. But there are some other locations in less urban states where they thought they were in a good position to reopen and found very quickly that they weren't. So I would like us to take a little extra step. I know a lot of leaders feel that the good numbers are a reflection on them. I'll say, Madam Mayor, that the good statistics that we have here in Taun are a reflection on you. But I'd like them to stay that way. And I don't think it makes anybody look bad to take a little extra time to be sure that we're doing it right. And I, again, I think it's a very well-conceived plan. I just hope that we take the thresholds and use them as a threshold to a threshold, you know, that we, that we do our countdown from when we have already counted down because I think we need to be doubly cautious.
Thank you, Mr. Fiori, and I appreciate that. And I will say that I think our good numbers are a reflection on our entire community, including everyone here. So thank you. All right, I think we're ready to vote now. So there's been a motion and a second. Mrs. Fagan, if you could do the roll call.
Mrs. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida? Oh, Mrs. Almeida? Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Set.
Excellent, the motion passes. Okay, thank you. And we can move on to, oh, I'm sorry, administrative business, staffing report. Do we need to do anything with that?
She's in place to unfill.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan.
Yes, Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Subcommittee reports, finance and law, Subcommittee, August 19th, Mr. Martin?
Finance and law Subcommittee met earlier this afternoon with myself, Mr. Fiori, and Mr. Cabral, also in attendance were Mr. Souza, excuse me, also in attendance were Mr. Cabral and Ms. Monahan. There were three items on the agenda. The first one was student activity requests. There aren't any at this time. Second item was bills payable in the amount of $584,147.23, which was approved. And finally, we had a facilities update from Ms. Monahan, saying that the staff was coming back tomorrow, and PPE is in the buildings, or if not, will be there when they get there. And Mulcahy Punch, Mulcahy School is, they're doing the punch list, furniture is being delivered and set up, and things are going well at Mulcahy. And that was basically it for the finance and law Subcommittee.
Motion, we accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the Subcommittee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. I respectfully ask my colleagues that I vote present on page two, voucher number 14248, in the amount of $7,236.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to, Donna, make sure you mark that down as Mr. DeMello voted present on the warrant underneath that, on that number. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so there was a motion and a second. If we could have the roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Unit A Teacher Subcommittee, August 6, 11, 12, and 18 meetings, Mr. Souza?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Myself, Mrs. Fagan, Mrs. Almeida met multiple times with the, with Unit A, with Mr. Cabral and the rest of the leadership team. We're working through the reopening plan, multiple issues are still on the table, and we have, we have additional tentative agreements, and negotiations are ongoing.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on, roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan?
Yes. Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Cafeteria Subcommittee, August 6th, Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. On August 6th, the Cafeteria Subcommittee met with members from the cafeteria, local 1144, present from the school committee side, with myself and committee member Nathan Palowski, and of course, leadership team and members from the cafeteria workers. I'm happy to say that we have reached a mutual agreement, and the MOA has been signed, and it was, was a great process, very wonderful people to be working with always. Thank you.
Motion to accept the report and adopt the recommendations.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Mrs. Fagan, roll call, please?
Ms. Doherty?
Yeah, congratulations for concluding. I vote yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Custodians Subcommittee, Mrs. Almeida?
Custodians Subcommittee met, and negotiations are ongoing.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Mrs. Fagan?
Yep, Ms. Doherty?
May I ask a question, please?
Sure, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's all right, I didn't raise my hand.
Oh.
So negotiations are ongoing, so it are all of these negotiations around the reopening. That's really, I know Unit A is assuming that the custodians, Mrs. Almeida, also is around reopening.
Point of information, Mrs. Doherty, we can't discuss negotiations at the table.
Well, I'm not looking for detail. It's around reopening, I'm sure. Thank you, Mrs. Almeida. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I vote yes.
Okay, Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Motion passes, thank you. Rules Subcommittee, August 19th, Mr. Fiori?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Rules Subcommittee met this afternoon with myself, Ms. Doherty, and Mr. Souza, also Mr. Cabral and Attorney Mitchell. The item on the agenda was the review of a face mask policy, which was presented because of the press of time, it was determined that we needed an additional meeting between now and our next regular school committee meeting to perfect the language because some things were in order other than what the committee felt comfortable with. And so we're not submitting a recommendation at this time, but we'll have a special meeting sometime between now and the next school committee meeting.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
On discussion.
Motion made and seconded on discussion, Mrs. Almeida?
Thank you. Is this not the policy that was submitted by MASC and revert, reviewed by the state attorneys? Is this the same policy that was referred to the Subcommittee to review?
With a few modifications, yes. The problem that the Subcommittee has was with emphasis on some things. Substance, it's basically the same, but the way the policy was worded, the emphasis was a little bit different from what the committee liked, and so we asked for additional time to amend it slightly.
All set?
Thank you.
Okay, so there was a motion and a second. If we could have the roll call?
Yes, Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Okay, on to business. So considering Mr. Fiori's previous comments a second ago, are we not taking up number one?
Correct, skip over that, that's not applicable.
Okay. And the revised 170-day school calendar?
Mr. Cabral?
Thank you. So I may address this with Mrs. Perry, who helped put the calendar together. So in your packet, we provided you with a memo regarding some of the changes we are making to the new, to the calendar, as you are aware, and I stated earlier in our plan, the commissioner has reduced the school year from 180 to 170 days. So beginning on August 27th through August 11th, those are the 10 days that the commissioner has authorized for professional development, and those are shaded on the calendar. We have circled the 14th and the 21st, as the 14th being the day for all our students to return, except for kindergarten and preschool, they would begin on the 21st. So we are still following kindergarten and preschool starting a week after the general population. And then what we also did do is we took our two professional days that are typically TPS professional days, again, I don't want to cause confusion. So the first 10 shaded days are the commissioners' professional days. We took our two professional days and moved them to November. So we would have a three-day window to provide additional training for our staff, which again, we will use that PD depending on where we are with our plan. If we need to provide training on more robust hybrid, we use that time for hybrid. If we need to provide more robust PD for full in-person learning, utilizing all the safety precautions, we use that time for personal learning and professional development. So that's what those shaded days mean there. I believe the December break and the conferences in November and the December break stayed the same. January did not change. February did not change. We added an additional parent-teacher conference day in March. April stayed the same, May stayed the same. And we are looking at an end date of the 2020-2021 school year being June 18th. And we are still exploring, and we want to make sure that we have calculated graduation day correctly. We believe graduation day would be 10 days prior to the end of school, which would land on June 6th. So we want to make sure that our interpretation of that is correct, and then we will communicate that at a later, at a later time to the public.
That is correct.
Thank you, Mrs. Almeida. So this is what we are proposing as a calendar. We are still awaiting feedback from several of our unions. Mrs. Perry did have some contact today. I haven't had a chance to check with Mrs. Perry, as I was in meetings most of the day. Did we receive any additional feedback, Mrs. Perry, that you can share with the committee regarding your conversations with the unions?
We received some feedback regarding the parent-teacher conferences. I just wanted to clarify that the parent-teacher conferences in March are taking place during the school day, during Wednesday, the school day. I did not communicate with the other unions. I reached out, I haven't heard, so.
Thank you.
Have we heard from you today?
Yes, I did hear from Unit A. And the question was revolving around the parent-teacher conferences. There is the evening, traditionally, the evening conference in the fall. And then if need be, a second evening conference. But the way that we've interpreted the calendar is that there is, I mean, depending on where we are, of course, contingent upon where we are, the parent-teacher conferences right now would take place on Wednesday, November 18th during the day, with a possible evening in March 17th. The parent-teacher conferences would take place during the day. So it doesn't change the evening meetings, the required evening meetings.
I just want to reiterate, as part of our plan, Wednesdays will be our remote day. So in November, that's a remote day that teachers will spend holding parent-teacher conferences with their students. And hopefully, we're not still in remote, but if we are in hybrid, that would be a remote day, which teachers would do parent-teacher conferences in March if we're still in hybrid.
It actually allows for more opportunity for parents because the length of the hours provide more opportunity for teachers.
It would eliminate the concern that I think sometimes is communicated to you, that parents were unable to schedule conferences because the window that is allotted for parent-teacher conferences is shorter, isn't as long as where we would have the full school day for conferences.
So, Madam Mayor, through you?
Sure, and then Mrs. Almeida, I know, Madam Leader.
Thank you. So, Mr. Cabral, so basically, the only question that they have is the March 17th, whether they're going to do PD, whether they're going to do the conferences during the day or at night? Is that the only question?
Yeah, that was my understanding.
We can approve the calendar, and the administration can just work that out. So I'll move, we will adopt the calendar as presented, and the administration can work on the time with the unit. That's not a problem.
Okay, motion and seconded. Mrs. Almeida, did you still have something?
I'll vote on this motion first, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Well, yeah, okay, there's still discussion. So, Mr. DeMello and then Mrs. Doherty?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to the superintendent or Mrs. Perry. So just so I understand, the November 18th Parents Conference and the March 17th Parents Conference is during the school day, which is what, 8:00 AM to 2:30, 3 o'clock?
So, yeah, 8:00 to 2:30, or 8:00, yeah, that's about, it depends on what tier. If they're the high school, they're an earlier tier, but generally, yes, those are the hours.
Has this changed since last year?
So traditionally, there would be an afternoon conference, which would be a half, an early release day, and then that evening would be conferences, and that, that's traditionally on the Thursday. So the original calendar, Mr. DeMello, had the 19th as an early release day for conferences like 12 to 2, and then that, an evening conference on Thursday evening. But we felt as though since Wednesday is our remote learning day, we thought it made more sense to put the conferences on Wednesday during the day, with the understanding that according to the teacher's contract, they do have an evening, they are required for an evening meeting. So we thought that if parents, if it was, you know, not convenient for parents to meet during the day, we would offer the evening meeting, so.
That's exactly my concern, because it's just like, you know, you want a dentist appointment at 4:00 after work, and everybody wants that appointment, and there's only so many 4:00s in the day. So I think that if we could, through, of course, negotiations, agree to the evening hours or somewhere into the evening to give our working parents an opportunity, that would be wonderful, so.
Right, and the, and the, actually, the benefit to this calendar is, so we would, we would do that. It would allow more time during the day. It would also allow the evening. And then by And then, by, by adding the one in March, it doesn't interfere with the contract, because it would be taking place during the day. But it also allows another opportunity for parents to meet.
Okay, availability is important. Thank you so much, Mrs. Perry.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam.
You're welcome, Mrs. Doherty.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to the superintendent or Mrs. Perry, I guess. So, my first question is on the November professional development, the three days. Is that during the day and remotely? Or is it after learning hours?
It would be during the day.
During the day? So, no, the students would be doing something else during those days?
Yes. The stu, well, it would be a traditional professional development day. Normally, we would have, as we said, the two before school started, one in November and one in March, requiring to provide PDPs to the teachers. So, because the commissioner had allowed for the 10 professional days, we took the two, that would be the 27th and 28th, and moved them to the November. And we thought that that would make sense, chunking it together right in between as a day off for the students because of the election. So, the other two days would be normally a professional development day, which would be a no-school day for students.
So, they, the students have the three days?
Yes.
Lucky students.
Well, we thought it made sense, rather than being a little disjointed, where they would come Monday, be off Tuesday, Wednesday's a remote learning day anyway. And it provides the teachers with some consistency with some professional development.
Right, thank you. And my, my second question is about the, so the parent conferences obviously are established the way they usually establish. But had built into the spring remote learning, at any rate, time during the week for the teachers to have those parent conferences. So, where teachers were available, they still touched base with those parents individually. So, is that still part of our remote learning plan? That, that, is that ongoing communication with families?
Yes, and we don't know where we'll be in March. So, I guess, you know, that may be something that we might want to revisit. But with the assumption that we were still hybrid and students were still remote on that Wednesday, we thought that it made sense, particularly this school year, where, you know, it, once the students get in and we assess, we want the parents to have a second opportunity to be able to talk to the parents about, I mean, talk to the teachers about their child's progress, just because it's going to be such a unique year.
So, and lastly, Madam Mayor, thank you. Because the unions have not signed off as they do traditionally on the school calendars, if we vote yes on this calendar, I'm imagining that our motion should include a caveat that says that if there's some change or disagreement, we would come back to the table. Yeah, or no, I mean, I'm not sure.
Well, the calendar went out as a proposed calendar, so yes. But hearing none, you know, hearing, I didn't hear actually any feedback from, from the other unions. The one conversation I did have was with the TEA, and that was the concern. But I do, I think that makes sense. I would leave that to the committee to decide.
That's, through you, Madam Mayor. That's why I made the motion, because the only caveat was the time on the parent-teacher, and they're going to have multiple times. So, you know, that was their only question. So, it sounded to me like it sounds, it sounds good. And basically, we just, the back half of the calendar is exactly the same with the vacations. I find the only thing was the adding of the PD day, so.
So, are you amending your motion to include the, if the teachers come back with some recommendation for change, that we would be amenable to hearing that? That's, that's really what.
I think that the motion is going to be, as it stands, that we approve the calendar. If they have a concern, the superintendent can bring it back to us. But we drive the calendar. So, I think that, I think that's what, I think that's what, I think that's what we're going to do.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. We always give deference, however, to hearing from the union for any interests or concerns that they have in that regard. So, I'd like to.
I just think we did, Carol, I think, Ms. Doherty, I think we did that, what she said. That's what I'm saying. I don't think we need to jump through hoops.
I got it, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, everybody all set on the calendar? So, there's a motion on the floor and a second. And if we could have the roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan?
Most certainly. Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Pulowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore? Mr. Fiore?
He's saying yes, but it's not.
Oh, okay. There he is.
His volume's not working, because he's not muted. You just can't hear him.
Okay, Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Unfinished business, action item.
Wait a minute, I have something to say, Madam Mayor.
Oh, excuse me, Mrs. Almeida, please.
Okay, I want to make a motion that the graduation of Taunton High School be on June 6th, 2021. It's 10 days after, before the last day of the posted school, and that's Mass General Law. I've made that motion a number of years, and I will do that again today. Thank you.
Second.
On discussion?
Motion made and seconded on discussion, Mr. Souza?
I've had no problem with that. My, my only question is whether it's Mass General Law or not. We're under, we're under different times here. And that can be adjusted by the legislature, the governor, or whoever the parties are that want to, want to do that. If we set a specific date now, we need some flexibility for the DESE. What, we're setting the date? I think, I think it's kind of backwards. I think we should, I think we have to wait till we get guidance from the, from DESI, to be honest with you. I'd like to hear from Mr. Cabral on this before I vote on it.
I'm motion.
Mr. Cabral, did you want to respond before?
Is it appropriate for me to respond?
Well, Jody, Mrs. Almeida also wants to respond, so I can go right to her then. Mrs. Almeida?
Well, in the past, we, the committee sets the graduation day. It's always been that way. And, and I remember when I was on MASC Board of Directors, we're the ones who set the graduation date in Mass General Law. I had asked Mrs. Mitchell to look that up before. She looked it up, and that's what it says. Correct, Mrs. Mitchell?
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct. So, it's, we've set the date. It's 10 days before the last day of school. Law's not going to change. I'm sure that DESI's not going to change it. Because now that we have remote learning in Taunton Public Schools, if we have a snow day, the kids can learn from home remotely. So, I have, we are, it's from the calendar. It's how the calendar is set. Doesn't matter if you go on to extra days or not. Therefore, I'm very firm. I will not withdraw my motion. And I hope that that would be the day that the children will graduate. They were jipped last year. I don't want to see them jipped again this year. Thank you.
Mr. Souza?
I'd still like to hear from the superintendent, please.
I have no problem setting a date, because if something changes, we're going to have to change anyway, like we did this year. I mean, we had a set date for graduation, and we were able to adhere to it. The commissioner did give us the opportunity to hold graduation later. And we were planning on doing something in July. However, we couldn't put something together in July. And we decided as a group that doing something in August wouldn't make sense, knowing that we would have all this work to get ready for the opening of the school. So, having a set date gives us something to plan for. And if something changes, then obviously, I'll bring it back to the committee. We can discuss whether or not we change, or whether or not we keep it the way it is. So, you know, you know how I like to operate fluid, in being able to adjust if needed. So, I'm fine with having the date, knowing that if something needs to change, we bring it back. We'll discuss it, and then, we'll vote on it as a group, the way we always have.
Okay, so, we do have a motion on the floor and a second. We're ready to vote. Mrs. Fagan, could you call the roll?
Well, Mrs. Fagan, myself and you, Mayor O'Connell, we both have, you have our grandson and your daughter this year, right? So, we'd like to get that going right, okay? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Pulowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Do we have action item review?
The only thing, I just like to comment, Madam Mayor, is that I did include the email that was, that was left out of the last packet. So, in your packet, there is an email from Ashley Pacico that I cited during the last meeting that addresses a sign language possibly being across Taunton High School. So, it is in your packet.
Thank you. Okay, so that's it there? Okay, we will move on then. Critical items not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance. Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to publicly thank our chairperson and our committee for adjusting our September dates going forward. I see on the calendar is now 5:45, Finance and Law Regular School Committee at 6:00 PM. So, that's definitely helpful to me and my work schedule. And of course, the public will, I'm sure you'll mention that also as the chairperson. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Anyone else?
Mr. DeMello did a good job.